Good evening. The City Council will now convene Thursday, December 12, 2024, to hold a regular meeting. Public participation to this meeting is provided in person and remotely via Zoom in accordance with Mass. General Law. This meeting is being broadcast by PBD TV. Remote participation can be accessed through the Zoom link on the city website. This meeting is also being recorded by our City Council's stenographer. Please join me in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. This evening, we have two hearings on our agenda. Hearing A is a zoning amendment. The clerk will read the record. Notice.
Notice hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 12, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Alwigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., and remotely via Zoom in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD as follows. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled Zoning Ordinance 2011 as amended is hereby further amended as follows. Section 1, by deleting under Special Regulations, Section 6.6.8 Designated Development District Residential Overlay; Section 2, by deleting Section 3.2.15 entitled DDD OD Designated Development District Residential Overlay District and inserting in place thereof a new Section 3.2.15 entitled MFOD Multi-Family Overlay District to comply with the requirements of Section 3A of the Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A. Section 3, by inserting a new Section 6.17 Multi-Family Overlay District as follows: 6.17.1 Purpose; 6.17.2 Establishment and Applicability; 6.17.3 Definitions; 6.17.4 Permitted Uses; 6.17.5 Dimensional Standards; 6.17.6 Off-Street Parking; 6.17.7 General Development Standards; 6.17.8 Affordability Requirements; 6.17.9 Site Plan Review; 6.17.10 Severability. Section 4, that the zoning map of the City of PBD entitled City of PBD Zoning Map adopted April 28, 2011 as amended, is hereby further amended as follows. The following parcels are included within the Multi-Family Overlay Districts. District 1, 0 Dearborn Road, map 089-010X and 7 Dearborn Road, map 078-019. District 2, 1 Brooksbury Village Drive, map 027-005X or any new subdivision of the lots thereof. Section 5, all ordinances or posses of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. PBD City Council, Councilor Stephanie R. Peach, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councillors, there are two items in our packet that are related to this hearing. At this time, I take a motion under suspension of the rules to receive Item 8C and 8G.
So.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councillors, 8C is communication from the city solicitor. This was in response to a motion made just requesting clarification on the vote needed to pass this zoning amendment. The city solicitor has confirmed that a simple majority vote of the council is needed to pass this. And the 8G is communication on the planning board, which voted in favor of this change at their last meeting. So at this time, I invite Mr. Bellavance up to discuss how the planning board went. I know we've talked about this zoning amendment extensively already, but any changes that have been made for this final draft that's been advertised. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening, Kurt Bellavance, Director of Community Development. I have short version, a long version, or a medium version, depending on what the City Council wants to hear. But I've been before the Board several times. In regards to this, the law was passed in 2021 in requiring all MBTA communities to have at least one zoning district of reasonable size where multifamily housing is permitted by use. The city has three districts that you can allow multifamily by right already. We didn't quite fit the criteria in regards to that, which is a minimum density of 15 units per acre, has to be located within a half a mile of a commuter rail, but that's not applicable to us. You can't have age restriction or suitable for families. It has to have a minimum land area of 50 acres, and at least one of the areas has to be, if you split that up, one has to be at least 25 acres or 50% of the entire district, and that we had to meet the number of units, depending on the size of our community. We began getting information, we attended webinars, we met with city solicitor, putting this information together. I was before the City Council in May of 2022, the first step. That was requirement to submit a compliance plan, which we did in June of 2022. Then we applied for grants, because part of the requirement is doing, creating a model that basically does a land use build-out analysis, something that we weren't equipped to do. We applied for a grant and were successful in that. In the meantime, they changed. They released guidelines in August of '22, then revised those again in October of '22, and then again revised them once more in August of '23. We were successful with the grant. We hired RKG and Innis Associates to assist us with doing the modeling. What we did was we took that, took a look at our existing multifamily areas, which was R3, R4, R5, the DDD Overlay District, and we started working and plugging in dimensional numbers like setbacks, floor area ratio, height, parking spaces. They plugged those into the model and determined whether we meet the qualifications in regards to, or the requirements as regard to the zoning. Working with that, I believe I presented back to the Industrial and Community Development Subcommittee in October. We received some positive feedback at that meeting in regards to some changes that we'd like to see in regards to the district. At that point, we had one district that we were proposing, which was in the Dearborn Road area. We went back to the drawing board based on that feedback, and what we did was we ended up creating two districts. One was still at the Dearborn Road area, which the existing DDD Overlay District is, and then the other one we looked at was Brooksbury Village. Those two areas contain the largest multifamily housing projects in the city. One is the Highlands and the other is Brooksbury Village. Highlands has 446 units and Brooksbury Village has 1,572 units. Next to the Highlands is a Jaden. That just opened a few months back. That has 180 units. So those are the three lots that we've decided to recommend in regards to this multifamily overlay district. The, we're not using any vacant land with this proposal. It's just land that's been developed already. And if implemented, the number of proposed new units would only be 138 units. The Jaden property would not be allowed to build any additional units under theirs. Jaden also is part of the inclusionary zoning, so they do have affordable units, and they count towards our SHI. Dearborn, the Highlands, and Brooksbury Village do not fall under inclusionary zoning. So if they decided to take advantage of this, they would have to provide affordable housing. So I'm not, I'm not a developer, so I'm not sure if they want to do the math to try to figure out if that's worth it for them or not to do, but those would be the two areas that potentially we could see development. Adopting this new district doesn't require them to build. It's not necessary to build. It's just that we can show that they could be built on those properties. So with the new, the two new districts that we came up with, it allowed us to meet the standards that were required as part of the law. It actually lowered our density. Originally, we had a higher density just covering the Dearborn Road area. It also allowed us to do less units, because we are using really fully maximized multifamily property already instead of vacant land. We actually lowered the height from six stories down to four stories, which is more consistent with the area. Then we also kept in, which we're allowed to do, is the inclusionary zoning at 10%. So as I mentioned before, if those two projects decided to build, they would have to follow the inclusionary zoning piece that we added as part of that, as part of the new zoning amendment. So the last piece of this is that there are three sections really in the zoning that we would have to amend. Section 3.2, that's the part of the zoning ordinance that describes our zoning ordinances. So within that, it lists residential, industrial, business, commercial, and so forth, and we would have to replace the DDD Overlay District description with the new multifamily overlay description. And then, as well as we're taking out the DDD Overlay District, which is Section 668, and we're replacing that with the new multifamily overlay district, would be 6.7. And then lastly, we would zone, we would vote to change the zoning map so it reflects that, it removes the DDD overlay and puts the new multifamily district in. So those are the three changes to zoning. As, was brought up with in regards to the planning board that voted favorably to recommend this, nine to one, where, what my feeling is that we're not similar to some of the communities that have rejected this. We can easily fit this in with existing multifamily housing, where some of the smaller communities can't, aren't able to do that, so it would affect them more than it would us. The state has outlined a list of different grants that we would not be able to apply for in regards to what state funding they have available. We put together a list of the last 10 years. We've received $9.6 million in grants. Just, that's just community development. I don't know if the schools or DPS or some other department received that. That's just ones we worked on. That $9.6 million left to an additional $6 million grant that we received on top of that. And then recently, they passed the Economic Bond Bill, which has $400 million in Mass Works, $100 million in local economic development grants, $30 million in Brownfields redevelopment, and $10 million in downtown vitality, all of grants that we would certainly apply for in our office. And then lastly, the question was brought up at the Industrial and Community Development Subcommittee. I did send out letters to the property owners. I sent a letter describing what we were doing. I let them know we had two public hearings, one last week. This week, I left my information or provided my information, my email, my cellphone, to have them call if they had any questions in regards to this. That was done right after our last meeting that we had. I have not heard back from either of the property owners in regards to that. And then one other question was asked at the planning board. They asked, how many multifamily units do we have in PBD? We have roughly 10,000 multifamily units in PBD. That includes two-family, three-family, and then, and four-families, and then once you get between five and eight, or five and nine, that's counted separately, then 10-plus. So the aggregate of that is a little under 10,000, if you count all of those units in regards to multifamily units in the City of PBD. And I think that covers it. I'm happy to answer any questions specific to the MBTA or specific to the City of PBD or the zoning, and any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellavance. Are there any members of the public here this evening that would like to speak in favor of the zoning change? Is there anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to the zoning change? Anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom? With that, I'll turn it over to the council. Any questions from the council? Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I made quite a few comments at Industrial and Community Development, and so I'm not going to restate all that, but I do, and I do plan to support this change, as I did at the committee. But I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that, and Mr. Bellavance touched on this, that PBD had several viable options open to us that would have gotten us to a similar result. And that result is, as a practical matter, this law is going to have little to no effect on PBD. Those options included looking at R3, R5, ultimately, and some other possels. Those were all modeled by Community Development, who did a ton of work on this internally as well as with their consultants, and I believe that the option that was chosen is the best option. And I believe that the fact that PBD has been able to utilize land, which is already densely residentially developed to satisfy this law, is an affirmation of my long-held belief that PBD has been doing more than its fair share of housing production for decades. So I think as much as we don't necessarily care for this mandate, the silver lining is that we've found a way to use it to prove that we've been doing the right thing all Also, a point I made in committee, but just as a reminder to folks, because it happened quite some time ago, the timing of the Brooksbury Village development, it was built just prior to PBD's adoption of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, and that resulted in a very large increase in housing units, and zero of those were added to the affordable units that are counted on PBD's SHI or subsidized housing inventory. That, the addition of all those units was a significant factor in PBD falling below the 10% target and being exposed to a number of 40B developments. So although this action tonight won't cause any of those Brooksbury units to become affordable, I'm very pleased that we have found a way to use that Brooksbury Village property to address another state mandate. So although it hurt us in one way, we have found a way to use it to help us in another, and I take some comfort in that. And lastly, while I understand and am sensitive to the vigorous opposition that we have heard from Councilor Rosignol, and he shared with the council, and I respect a number of those opinions voiced, and trust me, I am sensitive to many of them, I think that the solution that we've come up with here is palatable and avoids the risk of PBD losing much-needed grant funds. So again, I fully plan to support this tonight, and again, would like to thank publicly Mr. Bellavance and your team for all the hard work you've done on this. We're gonna, if all goes well tonight, we will get this in under the wire and satisfy the December 31 deadline. I did have one, I'm left scratching my head a little bit with respect to the map. I know we're going to be asked to adopt that tonight. The question I, and I will, I will support the map, but the question I have is, we're now showing all the overlay districts on the map, but what gets lost is the underlying zoning, what exists underneath those overlays. So to me, there should be two maps. There should be a map that shows the underlying zoning, and there should be a map that shows the overlay districts, because when all is said and done, the underlying zoning is actually the more important zoning, and the overlay is secondary. So I think those two need to exist, that you should be able to reference that. As a, as a physical map, that's a little harder to do. I think you need two maps. On the online version, I think it's easier to do, because it's just another GIS layer. You should be able to click a layer that shows zoning like we have today and just toggle another one that would add on the overlays. So I think that the technology part of that is not that complicated. It's more the, having to actually have, when you're looking at a hard copy, that you would actually need to be looking at two different maps. So I, although I will support that tonight, I'd like to, I don't know that it needs to be formally done as a motion, but I'd like Community Development to have that on their radar screen to, to get us a solution where it is obvious to anybody that wants to know what apostle is, to understand what the, what the underlying zoning is and what the, and what the overlays are. We've had kind of a mix of the two leading up to this, so I just want to take this opportunity to get, get that clarified. And with that, I thank you, Madam President, for the time.
And if I can address that?
Yes.
Yes, we've noticed that other communities, some other communities have done sort of that. So dating myself, if you had a Rand McNally map and you looked at it, and if Massachusetts would have a large part of Boston, that you could look closer. So I think that's something we could easily accomplish and get that done. So when people are looking for zoning information, you would have the main zoning map, and then you could have like subareas showing that blown up and larger. So that's, that should be easily accomplished.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be brief in my disdain for this entire hearing. But anyway, Mr. Bellavance, how many hours did you have to spend on this?
I'd say at least probably four to six weeks of full-time hours, so.
Thank you. And the only piece of what Councilor McGinn stated earlier, and I completely agree with, is we may be able to get some affordable housing out of Brooksbury Village. Other than that, this entire thing, I think, actually, I know, is not something anybody here would vote for if money wasn't tied, wasn't tied to it, and the fact that it is, I think, is disgraced by the state. So I won't be supporting this. I won't elaborate any further, because you, I've already stated my opinion vigorously numerous times, so I'll just leave my comments there. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, council.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Bellavance. You mentioned the nine to one vote from the planning board, and the one vote against this was Dr. Judy Otto, who, her background, she was Director of Community Development for the City of PB and I think other cities, and her doctorate is in maybe city planning or, so I'm wondering what her argument was against this, was she voted against. She was the one vote, nine to one.
During the planning board meeting, several of the planning board members had questions. I didn't get the sense that she was not supportive of that at that time with some of the questions she asked. I was happy that we got a nine to vote, nine to one vote. Anytime you can get that. I've been doing this for a long time. I'm happy with that. I did not follow up with her afterwards to ask her why she, she opposed that, so I don't have an answer for you. Sorry.
Okay. I didn't have, excuse me, I didn't have a chance to catch up and watch that meeting, so I thought she may have made a statement with her vote. She did not? Okay. Thank you. So I, along with Councilor Rosignol, have been against this from the beginning, but the council collectively wanted to take a wait-and-see approach, so a lot of time has passed since then. And I had hoped, I think that many people across the state had hoped, that the state would come, come to its senses and see how flawed this one-size-fits-all plan, that's all-stick-and-no-carrot approach, that just really shouldn't apply to us, and it's really flawed, how they rolled it out and how they're digging their heels in, and it's very upsetting, as you know, for, for many communities. Some may benefit from it, very few, I believe, but as it's already been stated here repeatedly, we've done our part, and we continue to do our part, and we didn't need to get beat about the head and neck in order to, you know, be told that we need to do something that we've been addressing for generations, and we do a good job here. So again, it's all stick, no carrot, and it's completely flawed, and it was very disappointing that the state didn't see that and didn't be a little bit more flexible and go back to the table and treat cities and towns with respect, so that their municipal government, their elected government can continue to have some control, local control, because they are elected by their constituents, to make these decisions and to maintain the character of their communities. So this was very, very disappointing, discouraging, and just a real letdown that the state would just ram this down everybody's throat the way that they did without flinching and without going back to the table. Very discouraging. But I do respect my colleagues and all the work that has been put into this, and I do respect my colleagues' vote on this, and I, in particular, Councilwoman McGinn, I know that he really sharpened his pencil in an effort to assist us in coming up with something that a majority of the council could stomach. I get that, and I appreciate it. So I will not be supporting it, but I thank you for your, all your work on this, Kurt, and let's just hope that we say nothing's going to happen, they can't do it. With a stroke of a pen, you know that they can change it, and we may end up having an overlay district that does have construction that we think today won't happen. We know with the state, they change on a dime when they want to, so. I think I've said enough. I will not be supporting it, but I respect everybody's opinion and all the work that's been done on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Councillor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a couple clarifying questions. You've answered them all, but I just want to hear them again, just to make sure we understand the numbers. But could you say the first option that we had looked at, there was a potential of how many units that were going to be brought online?
I vaguely remember, it was at least between 700 and 1,000 units, so.
And then for this version, that you've, you've gone back to the drawing board and we've come up with these two districts, about how many units total?
138.
Okay, great. Thanks. And the mandate from the state, what percentage of affordable housing is required in that mandate?
Zero.
Okay, thanks. So I'm not, not trying to be cute with it, but I'm just trying to underscore a point here, that the spirit of the mandate doesn't seem to dictate that we want to improve communities' affordability or to have additional affordable housing. So I, I agree with Councilor Rosignol and Councilman Manning-Martin. I will be supporting this this evening. I don't think that the mandate was, was appropriate, but I do thank you and our, our team here at City Hall that put in, by your rough estimate, at least 300 hours on this, so very much appreciated for, for trying to come up with a creative solution that'll have the least amount of impact on us here. Again, I think if this was truly an affordable housing initiative, you know, we would have possibly, you know, a split council or a number of folks that might say, okay, well, there may be value in adding additional affordable housing or whatever, and we'd be open to debate with that, but I think the guise that this is going to help with affordable housing and really there's zero affordable housing in this mandate just further underscores Councilor Rosignol's point that we are voting for this to have the least amount of impact and not impact our funding coming to the city. So again, thank you very much, Kurt, and, and for your team for working so hard on this.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Seeing none, I just want to thank you, Kurt, and your team. We had many, many meetings about this to make sure that we could come up with something that was palatable to the council. I share a lot of the sentiments that Counselor Rosignol has shared, and Counselor Manning-Martin and other counselors through this entire process. I don't believe this mandate was done in good taste. I think I will be supporting this tonight for the sole reason that PBD has done its part. We're proving that we've been doing our part because we're able to find an area in the city that is already developed, that meets these guidelines. So with that being said, I would take a motion to close the public hearing. You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselors, at this time, the clerk has advised me that the motion on the hearing is just to adopt as advertised and does not need to be read because it has already been read. So I entertain a motion to adopt as advertised. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to adopt as advertised. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Rosignol.
No.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Dagel.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
No.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to two.
Thank you, Mr. Belavance. Counselors, moving on to hearing B. Counselor Gamache.
Yes, at this time, I would, based upon the request from the attorney for J.D. Raymond Transport, I would make the motion to move this public hearing to January 23rd.
Counselor, can you just procedurally receive 8A?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Under suspension of the rules, receive 8A, which is the communication stating that they would like to move the hearing to the 23rd. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion on 8A. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
Yes, I move to send this to January 23rd. I also, you want to vote on that?
Yes. Late two?
Late two. Move to receive, and this is the response from the fire chief that he has no objections concerning this special permit. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion on late two to refer to this hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache?
Thank you.
Moving on to reports of committee, Legal Affairs Committee, Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, we had a Legal Affairs Committee meeting. In attendance were Counselor Melville, Counselor Gould, Counselor Dagel. Sitting in for the first part of the meeting was Counselor Manning-Martin, and then Counselor Higgins supplanted Counselor Manning-Martin during the meeting. We had two items on the agenda. The first one was a gift of land to the city. This is a parcel on northwesterly by Interstate 95, 130 feet, more or less, northeasterly by Stonewall, land owner unknown, and southerly by land of B&amp;M Railroad. It contains about 1,540 square feet. The subcommittee approved this gift of land sale, and I now bring that to the council as a whole. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Rosignol. Sorry, I was discussing with the clerk what vote was needed. Can you repeat your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
To approve and to approve and accept the gift of land to the city.
Thank you. Counselors, you heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Rosignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Dagel.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Second item on the agenda was the purchase or possible purchase of city-owned land located at Zero Birch Street, or also known as 004.51A parcel. This was already a motion that was enacted back in 2019 in motion P 733-19, which was a formal declaration that the city parcel known as Zero Birch mapped for parcel 51A as surplus and further refer this matter back to the city council. This motion back in 2019 was affirmed this evening, and I now bring that before the council. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turk, Rosignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Dagel.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Another motion that was made this evening in Legal Affairs was the affirmation for P 666-19, which is move to recommend the sale of the city-owned parcel of Zero Birch. The sale should be referred to the city clerk's office, notice of abutters, and interested purchasing parties, and send this also to Community Development to issue an RFP for a butter, I'm sorry, to arbitrate the sale if there's more than one interested party. That was affirmed and approved in subcommittee. I now bring that to the council for a vote.
Counselors, you heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Rosignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Dagel.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. The last motion that was made in subcommittee was to remove any structures or any patios that may be on said parcel. That was also approved by unanimous committee vote, and I now bring that to the council as a whole. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Rosignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Dagel.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ad hoc Committee on Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy met earlier this evening. Present for the committees were Counselors Gould and Higgins and myself as chair. Also present were Counselors Peach, Dagel, Gamache, Manning-Martin, Melville, and Rosignol. The committee was addressed by Mr. Belavance from Community Development, and he was here to provide a progress report on the use of $271,000 designation grant PBD received as a function of becoming a green community earlier this year. Mr. Belavance advised that 29 structures were subject to an energy audit and that there was a focus on buildings with the fastest payback periods. They also utilized a National Grid program to draw in some additional financial support. Of those 29 structures, they chose 18 projects and 18 municipal buildings to advance. In total, there was $466,000, including the National Grid funds and some, a minor amount of city money that brought the grand total up to $480,000. The National Grid funds could only be applied to 16 of the 18 projects. For some reason, the other two didn't meet the criteria. Mr. Belavance indicated that 12 of those 16 projects that fell under the National Grid umbrella are complete. There, that leaves six projects to be completed, and he was of the belief that that would be done by the end of January 2025. All that work, completed work, needs to be certified by National Grid and the state, and the new facilities director is heavily involved in this as well. The designation grant money and projects, well, the projects need to be complete and the money needs to be spent before the city can participate in the competitive grant application process that's associated with the Green Communities Program. There are two competitive grant rounds per year with an application, with application dates due in March and September. So with these projects being completed in January, if all goes well, Mr. Belavance indicated that PBD could potentially apply in the March round of competitive grants. And the projects that they would queue up for that round would be others that were not selected from the original list of the buildings that were subject to the energy audits. Mr. Belavance indicated that he also recently attended a Green Summit a few weeks ago and said that there was, the key takeaway from that was that there were some modifications to the stretch code that are forthcoming. Mr. Belavance was asked to start looking at the new Massachusetts Climate Leader Communities Program to see if that might be a designation PBD should strive to achieve, and he agreed to do that. So Mr. Belavance will be back before the committee to report additional progress going forward. Madam President, there were no motions. That's a report of progress, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Next, we have the Municipal Safety Committee. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Municipal Safety Committee did meet this evening with myself as chair, along with Counselors Dagel, Gamache, Higgins, and Rosignol, as well as a full complement of the council that is currently here tonight. There were several items on the agenda, all addressed by Captain Richards. First was the intersection of Walnut and Holly Street. I'm having trouble with my handwriting. Holly Street, he collected, he went back and collected nine years of data, crash data, and there were eight crashes that were reported either to the Mass DOT or came through the police reports in those nine years. And there have been zero in 2024, so that's good. But Counselor Peach brought up specific issues of speeding in the area of Harmony Grove with the increased development in Salem by Moose Lodge, and also in anticipation of increased units in the near future in both PBD and Salem. Captain Richards is planning to meet with Salem PD to try and come up with a joint enforcement plan to mitigate these problems and any future problems. And there is also a sightline issue at that intersection that he's going to take a look at. The next item, intersection, was Lynn and Bartholomew. This is an area that had 23 crashes in the same nine-year period. And the issue in this area is volume. It's a volume problem. There were eight crashes in 2022. That was the highest number year of crashes. And in particular, the issue is Bartholomew turning onto Lynn Street. There's a lot of accidents there, and they're all this, he called them carbon copy crashes, where folks aren't letting people out, and folks coming off of Bartholomew see an opening and they take it, and it's a little risky, and it's ending up in crashes of T-bone proportion at that intersection. So there were a lot of things that were discussed. Courtesy is really the issue that is lacking. People just aren't letting people out at intersections or at the end of their streets down on Lynn Street in particular. He is going to take a look with the fire alarm system to see if we can tweak some lights and things like that, but he is going to try and be creative and see what he can do in communications with other departments. Lynn Street and Fairview intersection was also looked into by Captain Richards. He reported seven crashes in that same nine-year period, two of which were the same operator, and it was operator error. The road is, being narrow, was discussed in that area. Counselor Welton suggested taking a look at whether we can narrow, narrow the area. And also, Counselor Melville raised the issue of the bus stop that's in that area that may be exacerbating some traffic and accident issues, and take a look at potentially relocating that bus stop. Perkins Street, Perkins and Franklin in the Emerson Park area was also discussed. There has been success in that area with the installation of a speed reader or radar board. It's been effective. Also, the presence of a cruiser and the police presence in that area has also been effective in slowing people down. Franklin Street speeding complaints, he looked into that as well. He reported no accidents in that area, and also speeding in that area, he did not find to be an issue because the narrowness of the road and the turn in the road does not allow for people to pick up that much speed. So he did not find an issue with speeding in that area. So he is going to continue to look at these areas and take a look at implementing some of the suggestions the counselors came up with, and he is going to report back to us in a few months to see what type of ideas or solutions he can come up with. And that is my report of progress, Madam Chair. And while I, while I have the floor, I am going to jump out of turn and commend you for a great year. You ran a very efficient and effective council that was open and transparent, and we got a lot of work done in a very civil and enjoyable year. So I want to commend you. You should be very proud of yourself the way you conducted these meetings. You did a phenomenal job. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to echo Counselor Manning-Martin's sentiments. It's been an honor to have you as our president, and thank you very much for a great year. With that said, under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve, all papers being in order, item 9A, outdoor dining license, soyo restaurant bar to Central Street. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion on 9A. Any discussion? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you. That's going to require a setup of a public hearing.
Sorry. My apologies. Motion to receive and set up a public hearing.
Counselors, you heard the motion to receive and set up a public hearing? The clerk is going to clarify. I think this is maybe our first outdoor dining license.
It's actually our second, and we did hold a public hearing for the first, but it's not a requirement according to the ordinance.
We need to, we need to take a look at that, I think, because we, this whole outdoor dining thing remains a little bit in flux. We had the temporary measures that were in place that carried forward post-COVID. Mr. Belavance came before us. There was an attempt to, by the, by the mayor's office of Mr. Belavance to kind of shift that to a policy, if counselors might recall. There were a number of questions around that, and that, we haven't heard back from them on that. But all the while, in zoning, there is language that contemplates outdoor dining, specifically in the B.C., which I believe requires a public hearing. I respect that you may disagree with me, but I think it's a gray area. So I would, I guess my request would be, until we get this clarified, that we
So I, I, I would, I guess my request would be, until we get this clarified, that we hold off, hold off on this item. Because I think either approving it tonight when there's not clarity on it, or scheduling a public hearing when we're not certain one is required, neither of those alternatives really makes sense. So I, I would suggest maybe we continue that item.
Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think anybody's going to be doing any outside dining in January, so I'll just make the motion to just receive this.
Yeah.
So moved.
Councilor McGinn.
Through you to Councilor Rosignol. I, I think that's the prudent approach, and, you know, the building is, doesn't even have a roof on it at the moment. It's currently under some major construction. It's, it's going to be many months before any entertainment happens there, so this is not going to impede their, their progress at all from my perspective.
Thank you. Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Councilor McGinn. To whom shall we refer this other than the clerk to make the determination?
That's why I was suggesting that we continue it until we, till we, but you're suggesting we go to perhaps the city solicitor for, for, for a, I mean, a, or a building commissioner? I'd be, perhaps, perhaps the building commissioner would, would make sense in this instance.
Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. If there's, if, if we're unclear whether this should actually go to public hearing or not, I agree with Councilor Manning Martin. Why don't we put this in a subcommittee so that it can be vetted? And then we, and in that subcommittee, we can then determine whether we need to continue to do outside dining as a policy, or do we continue to have a public hearing on outside dining? I think that should be, I think that is the piece that needs to kind of be vetted in a subcommittee. As far as this one applicant, in my opinion, we just receive it. We vet those questions in the subcommittee, and then depending upon the outcome of that vet, then we can act on this if need be.
Councilor McGinn.
Yeah, thank you. Through you to, to Councilor Rosignol. I think that makes sense, but as I mentioned earlier, it's, it is in committee, I believe. I believe it's in industrial and community development. That's, the last meeting we had on this was Mr. Bell Vance presenting a policy. We had a number of questions on that. He never came back, so I, I think maybe to resurrect it in industrial and community development is the right approach. We can get clarity on this, and, and in, and all the while, we can just hold this one in obedience, just receive it for the, for the time being. And hopefully, Councilor Manning Martin, that, that satisfies your...
Oh, that makes complete sense.
Councilor Rosignol. So the motion on the floor is to receive. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve all papers being in order, item 9B, utility contractors licensed advanced building components, 29 Worm Street, Middleton, and Marsh X Development, 136 Pleasant Street, Dunstable. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 9B. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve all entertainment licenses and business renewals for 2025 in its entity of all of 9F. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Any discussion? Councilor McGinn.
Yeah, on the motion, one of them is just an administrative nit. One Main Street is listed on there twice, so we only need to contemplate that one once in the motion as, as, as it gets reflected in the record. But second and more important, I've, I've had a, a number of neighbor complaints, and I, the police are engaged in evaluating some issues related to the Copacabana Steakhouse. So I'd like to set that one aside from the list for the time being, and we can bring that one back at a later date. So I, if, if Council motion would be amenable to adjusting his motion just to drop that one, one line item off the list.
Just for confirmation, which one? I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. It is about a quarter of the way down, the Copacabana Steakhouse, 150 Main Street.
So amended.
Councilor Rosignol. Councilors, you heard the motion on item 9F with taking out Copacabana Steakhouse to receive and approve all papers being in order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve all papers being in order, 9G Lodging House Licenses Renewal for 2025 in its entirety. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 9G. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve all papers being in order, 9H Inholders License Renewal for 2025 in its entirety. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 9H. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve all papers being in order, 9I General Licenses Renewal for 2025 in its entirety. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 9I. Any discussion? Councilor McGinn.
Through you to Councilor Daigle. I don't, I don't know if you'll pull out the, the bell in and so that you can recuse on that one, just, you've done that previously.
Councilor Daigle.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Yes, for the record, I'm going to recuse myself and refrain from voting on this.
I'll amend my motion to include all general licenses except for the bell in at this moment. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion amended for 9I to receive and approve all papers being in order without the bell in, the outdoor dining license for the bell in. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. For the record, Councilor Daigle has recused herself from the following vote. Councilor Rosignol.
Motion to receive and approve all papers being in order, 9I Outdoor Dining License Bell in to Washington Street. Roll call, vote please.
Councilor McGinn.
Yeah, thank you. Through you to, to, to Councilor Rosignol. Could you just add the language with the same conditions stipulated in the 2024 renewal?
So amended.
Councilors, you heard the amended motion. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilors Rosignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries, signed to zero.
Thank you. Someone can get Councilor Daigle. Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Lastly, happy holidays, everyone, and again, thank you very much for a positive and productive year, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. No motions this evening. I just want to remind the public that this Saturday, December 15th, from 9:00 to 1:00 PM, PBD Police will be hosting a Fill the Cruiser with Toys event to provide toys for the holidays for PBD residents. You can also visit them, an ongoing toy collection in PBD Police Department Headquarters Lobby. Additionally, I'd like to echo the comments from Councilor Manning Martin and Councilor Rosignol. You've done an excellent job this year as president, having been a recent president, and I know how difficult it can be sometimes, but you handled it very, very well. You were able to move forward a pretty aggressive agenda, and we got a lot done, and I really appreciate all your hard work throughout the course of the year. So with that, I hope everyone has a great holiday.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve all papers being in order, the 2025 renewals for Class 1 motor vehicle licenses as listed in the agenda. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 9C, Class 1 motor vehicle license. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to approve all papers being in order, item 9D, Class 2 motor vehicles, 2025 renewal for all items listed under 9D. So moved.
Counselor, I just couldn't hear you. D or E?
D.
D. Counselors, you heard the motion on item D. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Melville.
Moved under suspension of the rules to approve all papers being in order, Class 3 motor vehicle licenses renewal for 20, I believe that's supposed to be 2025, items 9E. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 9E. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Melville.
We have a late communication as well, I believe. Some renewals on there. Just want to make sure I get those correct. I believe it's under late four. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item late four.
Councilors, you heard the motion to receive late four. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Melville.
I would move to approve all papers being in order, the items listed on late four. That would be the Class 2 motor vehicle licenses for 2025, the entertainment licenses for 2025, and the inholder licenses for 2025. They're listed as A, B, and C. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion to approve late four. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. And just to echo all the comments thus far, I think you did a fantastic job as president this year. Thank you for moving us along. You kept a robust debate. You allowed everybody to speak, and you did so in a respectful manner, and you did an outstanding job, and I really appreciate your hard work this year. Thank you. Thank you very much, and have a great holiday.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gamache.
Yes, I have no motions, but I would also like to commend you on a job well done this year. Everything went fairly smoothly. We had no problems, and I want to wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7A. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 7A. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8B and approve as presented. These are on the motion. These are city council appointments to the Community Development Authority. Greg Buah and Brian Van Agro for one-year term extensions, term to expire December 31st, 2025. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 8B to receive and approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E and refer to the PK Motors Class 2 Motor Vehicle License Renewal Matter. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 8E. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8F and refer to the PK Motors Motocas Class 2 License Renewal Matter. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 8F. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item late one and refer to the PK Motors Class 2 License Renewal Matter. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on late one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive late three and refer to the building commissioner for action. This is also related to the PK Motors Class 2 Renewal Matter. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion on late three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. That's it for motions, I believe. Again, I would like to add my thanks to you for a job well done this year. You had a, a great command of the, of the rules right from, from the, from the get-go, and so you, that was, it was a very quick learning curve, and ran some really orderly meetings, and that's very much appreciated. So great job, and looking forward to having you back with us here in the, in the cheap seats. Thank you. Also, happy Merry Christmas, or Merry, happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 10A, look for final approval of one handicap parking space in front of and along the property line of 6 Evans Road. 6 Evans Road. So moved, Madam Chairman.
Councilors, you heard the motion on 10A to receive and adopt as advertised. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilors Rosignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries, 10 to 0.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy holidays to everybody, and you did a wonderful job, Madam President. Good job. Proud of you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Daigle.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, fellow councilors, for taking care of everything on the list. So I am going to echo all of your sentiments and commend President Peach for a great, efficient, smooth year, and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the clerk. Do we have any outstanding license or non-responsive renewals this year yet?
Yes, I have a number.
Would you like the council's assistance?
I believe the council gave me that assistance last year with the motion, so on January 15th, all the license holders that haven't renewed will be getting a visit from the building commissioner.
Excellent. Don't be shy. Don't be shy. Excellent. Glad to hear that. With that, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I'll see you all next year.
Thank you. Councilor Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no motions or resolutions this evening. I just wanted to also thank you for a great year as our council president. Appreciate you putting up with me and my learning curve through the, my first year. I appreciate that. And I want to just say happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone. We'll see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I'd like to thank you all for keeping your debate respectful this year. We've had some great debates, and I think this is a great council, and we work very well together, and we, I think we, we come up with some pretty good product through our disagreements. It's been a pleasure serving as the president this year. I'm very much looking forward to drawing a number to sit out there next year. Yes, yes. I think those are the expensive seats. I think this is the one you get saddled with. But with that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Happy New